December 2nd to order. The first meeting in December, on this Monday, is always a little different for county commissioners. Before they get into the regular agenda, they have the reorganizational meetings. And so myself is acting chairman until a chairman is elected. I'm going to open the floor for nominations for the position of chairman. And according to the North Carolina Journal of Specialties, 153A-39. So I'll open the floor for nominated.
Mr. Chairman. I move to nominate Matt Swain for chairman.
Nomination of Matthew Swain can be put forth. Are there any other nominations for the position of chairman? Hearing none, I believe we can appoint Matthew as chairman by acclamation. Since there are no other nominations, a member of this board would like to take a vote. Hearing none, I will, by acclamation, turn the gallows over to Matthew as chairman. Congratulations on your nomination.
Thank you, County Manager Lucas. I'll now open the floor for nominations of vice chairman pursuant to General Statute 153A-39. Nominations. Are there nominations for vice chair?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Tommy Jordan.
Commissioner Lohhan nominates Tommy Jordan.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barbie.
I'd like to nominate Ashley Morgan again for vice chair.
Mr. Barbie nominates Ashley Morgan. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll close the nominations. All those in favor of Commissioner Tommy Jordan, please raise your hand. I record two votes. All those in favor of Commissioner Ashley Morgan, please raise your hand. I record four votes. Congratulations, Vice Chairman Morgan. Next on the reorganizational agenda is the approval of the bonds. I'll ask for a motion to approve the following public bonds. For the tax administrator, Clinton Swearengen, in the amount of $100,000. For the finance officer, Toby Henson, in the amount of $150,000. The register of deeds, Suzanne Louder, in the amount of $50,000. And for the sheriff, Jeff Crisco, $5,000.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jordan.
I make the motion, we approve the bonds as listed.
Motion by Commissioner Jordan to approve the bonds as presented. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Farr. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Chairman, oh, I shouldn't read that part, sorry. I'll now open the floor for appointments to the following boards and committees.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Morgan.
I move that we remain as we were in 2019 year, calendar year, for all commissioners on the same boards.
Commissioner Morgan has made a motion to, for current commissioners to remain in their current committee seats for the follow, for the next year. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Jordan. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Item G on the reorganizational agenda is to establish the meeting dates for 2020. The meeting dates are presented in your agenda packets. What's the pleasure of the board for the meeting date?
I make the motion, we accept the dates listed.
A motion by Commissioner Lohhan to accept the dates as presented in item G. Is there a second? A second by Commissioner Barbie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. During any regular meeting of the Board of the County Commissioners, in order to act in their capacity as the Board of Governors for the Greater Baden Water and Sewer District, or for the Piney Point Water District, may at their discretion recess a commissioner's regular meeting and reconvene as the Board of Governors of either of the above two entities in order to conduct business matters related to that entity. I think that's the end of the agenda. Do we officially adjourn from this? All right, now I will call the regular meeting of the Stanley County Board of Commissioners, December 2nd meeting, to order. And I will ask for Commissioner Lohhan to ask the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you would, bow with me, please. Father, we come to you with thankful hearts. We just celebrated Thanksgiving, but we thank you each day for the blessings that you give us. We also ask that, as we receive those blessings, that we be mindful of those that are in need, that are around us. And Lord, point those people out so that we might lend a helping hand. Thank you, Lord, for the blessing of Jesus, our Lord and Savior, who was born during the Christmas holidays. We celebrate that. Greatest gift that's ever been given. We just pray that we would do things each day and each hour that are in your pleasure and not our pleasure. Just guide us as we make decisions tonight. Let us make wise decisions for Stanley County and its citizens, and forgive us for our sins, in Christ's name, amen. Please join me with the pledge.
What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Thank you, Commissioner Lohhan. I'll ask for approval or adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
Move we approve the agenda as presented.
A motion to approve the agenda as presented by Commissioner Morgan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Farr. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Item number one on the agenda tonight is the fiscal year 1819 audit presentation. Our presenter tonight is going to be Mr. Stuart Heel.
I'd like to, first of all, thank you guys for having us do your audit once again this year for your June 30, 2019 annual audit. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to do this. We also appreciate your staff, Toby, Melissa, and many, many other staff members from various departments were very helpful and cooperative throughout the audit process, and we certainly appreciate that as well. I think you have, I don't know how to, let's see here. You've got a presentation summary, I think. I don't know how to get that back up, but. Okay, so with the presentation summary, we hit some highlights of key numbers and items within the audit report. Audit report is, is, we, we form an opinion through the audit process as to whether or not your financial statements accurately and materially reflect the proper position of your finances for the county for the year end of June 30, 2019. And in our opinion, they absolutely do. You have good records, the clear records, and valid. So with that, you know, the audit has been submitted to the LGC, and it's a good report as always. It has been each of the years that we've been here, so there's no question about that. With the report that we have here, there's a page in the front, or a letter basically, that is a letter to governance, which is, which we're required to, to provide to you. And that basically indicates that if we, if we had had any problems or issues, or disagreements or anything, that would show up in this report. Thankfully, and as expected, as I've already mentioned, your management has been very cooperative. That's part of it. We didn't have any issues. So all of those things are good. So that's basically what the letter up front is about, is just to, to have an opportunity to let you know and communicate to you any issues or problems that we had. There are no financial findings. There's a few, few small findings in the Medicaid reporting, but those are, those are minor, and I understand that that's already been corrected with, once we have mentioned that, and with the proper departments, or the relevant departments. Those items can be found in the full audit report, the compliance section near the back of the full audit report. Those are, those are explained in detail. So you can, you can look there to see what that was, if you're interested in it. As I say, it's, it's, it's already been addressed. But at any rate, we do want to be upfront and clear. After, after the letter, there's a couple pages of a lot of numbers. I'm not going to read unless you want me to. I'm not going to read out all these numbers for you, because really, these numbers, these, these are, all come from the audit report, and they represent some of the key items and key numbers that we feel are important throughout the audit. These, these two pages of all this data is, is the background that creates the charts. So we feel like pictures are worth a thousand words, as they say, so we, we like to use the charts rather than read through the numbers. So if we can go on to page, page six, and start looking at the charts. The first chart on page six is analysis of your general fund, fund balance for the last five years. We like to use a few years so that we can see if there's any trends, you know, and, you know, up or down, or are they, you know, remaining stable. So for your, for your fund balance, we've got both the total fund balance, that's in blue, and you can see from 2015, the, the general fund total balance was about $20 million. And as of June 30, 2019, it's about $31 million. The unavailable fund balance, that's, that's fund balance that has already been restricted or committed or otherwise assigned. That's the red bars that you see there. In 2015, it was about 4.6 million, and in 2019, it's about 8 million. So there's a slight trend upwards in both the total and the unavailable fund balance. The chart at the bottom of the page represents the fund balance as a percentage of your general fund expenditures. And we have two lines there. One is blue, which represents Stanley County, and the red one represents a group weighted average. That's groups of other counties in the state with similar population to Stanley County, so that you can see how you, you compare to others in the state. So at the end of 2019, you see that we have Stanley County, but we don't have the state, because those numbers were not available as of yet. But you can see that your percentages have gone up. In 2015, it was 24.76 percent, up to 37.86 percent in 2019. The state average is, the most current one we have is 37.72. So you're right in line with other counties in the state of, of a similar population size as Stanley County in that category. On page seven, the chart at the top, we're reflecting which funds hold your cash balances. What, what funds have your cash balances in? You can see, obviously, the, the, most of it is in your, your general fund. That's, that's the, that's the largest amount. You can see the numbers at the bottom of that page that gives you the, the numbers there. $26,592,000 is what's in the general fund, which is the largest one. The second largest is the Stanley County Utility Fund, followed by the other governmental fund. So that's, that's the largest, the three largest funds with your cash balances. The second chart is the same concept, is with the total fund balance for, for each of those funds. And so you can see that general fund is also the largest for fund balance. And you have, followed by the airport fund and the Stanley County Utility Funds. On page eight, the chart at the top of the page reflects your collection percentages of your taxes, your property taxes. So we can see again Stanley County in the blue. In 2015, your, your collection percentages was 96.82 percent. It's gone up to 97.79 percent. Other counties in the state of similar size, at the latest one that we have is 98.24 percent. So you're just a tad below that, but it's in the same ballpark. Property value at the bottom of the page, and levy amounts. The property value is the chart on the left with the red, I'm not keeping up with myself, am I? The chart on the left with the red bars represents the total property values. In 2015, it was $4.4 billion. In 2019, it was $4.9 billion. And the actual total levy amounts for each of those years are reflected in the chart on the right, in the blue columns. In 2015, $29.7 million, and in 2019, $33 million. On page nine, the chart at the top basically is showing you where your total debt lies. So the bulk of the total debt, 82 percent of it, is in the governmental funds, and the remaining 18 percent is in your business type funds. And at the bottom, your general fund revenues. We're going to, we break these down into different types of categories, so that you can see where your, where the bulk of your revenues are. You can see from this chart, the 48.1 percent is avalorum taxes, which is the largest. The second largest is your local option sales taxes at 16.25 percent, followed by sales and services, which is 12.8 percent. And then on page 10, last but not least, is a similar chart for your expenditures. So we can look here and see that the, the largest portion of your expenditures is in public safety, followed by education, and then third, human services. So those are the charts that we try to use to, to, to look at where your revenues are, where your expenditures are. Some of the others, we're looking at how you're comparing with other counties in the state, and, and also, we're looking at trends over a five-year period. And that's basically the gist of our, our presentation. Happy to take any questions or any comments.
Are there any questions for Mr. Heel?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jordan.
Back on the Stanley County property valuation and levy amounts. Red chart, total property value, total blue levy amount. You've got it marked as into millions. Look at 2019, is that 4.9 million or 4,900 million? That's what I wanted to be sure of. Okay, 4.9 billion.
Four, on, it's 4.9 billion. If you go to, you can see the actual numbers on the, the page, let's see, the front, the page at the front with the numbers. On page.
Page five.
Page five. Near the top of the page, your, your property type valuation is the one, two, three, fourth line is your valuations, and then your levy amounts on pa, on the fifth line.
Yes, sir. Any other question?
Okay.
We appreciate it, Mr. Heel.
Once again, thank you for having us, and y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Is, is there any other discussion on the audit as presented? If not, we'll seek a motion to accept the audit. Motion to accept the audit as presented from Commissioner Jordan. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Morgan. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Heel.
Thank you.
Item number two on the agenda tonight is the Stanley County Water and Sewer Authority member appointments. Presenter is going to be Mr. Dwayne Wingo.
Thank you. Four members of the Stanley County Water and Sewer Authority Board are set to retire on January 3rd, 2020. The Stanley County Board of Commissioners will need to make new appointments and set terms for these appointments. As of this morning, six new applicants have applied to be on the board. The Stanley County Water and Sewer Authority has recommended that the existing members, William Rigsby Jr., Joshua Morton Jr., and Curtis Farr, be renewed for another term, with Joshua Morton Jr. and Curtis Farr serving three-year terms, and William Rigsby Jr. serving a two-year term. This would be in order to stagger the future term's expiration dates. Stanley County Water and Sewer Authority further recommends that Billy Franklin Lee, or Frank Lee, be selected to replace Mr. Terry Blaylock. Mr. Blaylock has submitted a letter seeking to step down from the board effective immediately. Staff recommends the term of any new appointees be staggered so that all terms do not have the same expiration date, and recommends two of the board members serve a three-year term, and the other two members serve a two-year term. You have attached with your package all applications from the existing members and the new applicants. The new applicants are Joseph Burleson, Billy Franklin Lee, Lindsay H. Carter, Shannon F. Maynard, Ross Newland, and Nicole Ashton.
Thank you, Mr. Wingo. Are there any questions before he steps away? If not, if there's no objection, I'll honor the request to elect these seats in two different terms. So we'll elect one set in a three-year term, and one set in a two-year term. So I'll open the floor for nominations for the three-year term, and that's two seats, correct?
Correct.
All right, so we need nominations to fill two seats to a three-year term on this board.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
I move to appoint Joshua, Josh Morton and Curtis Farr for the three-year term.
All right, so there's nomination for Josh Morton and Curtis Farr. Are there any other nominations for that three-year seat? If not, I'll close the nominations, and we'll seek a motion to accept those two members to fill the two seats by acclamation. Thank you, Commissioner Lohhan. A motion by Commissioner Lohhan to accept the two members presented by acclamation. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, I believe, Commissioner Farr. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. I'll now open the floor for nominations to the two-year term. And that is an additional two members?
Correct.
All right. All right, so nominations for the two-year term are open. Mr. Barbie.
I make a motion that the, uh, one of them, Richard Junior, and Jerry Franklin Lee, for two-year term.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll close the nominations for the two-year term, and we'll seek a motion to accept the two members presented by acclamation. Motion by Commissioner Morgan to accept the two members as presented by acclamation. A second by Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero.
Want to comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just like to thank some of the board members that do offer to serve, and in the spirit of what Commissioner Lohhan often says, we're always looking for people to serve on more boards. I'm not going to say their names, but one of these people serves on four boards right now, which I thank you for. But it shows that there's room in the county for people that want to serve. If you come forward, we would put you on some of these boards, but you got to step up. But I appreciate all these folks that do serve, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wingo.
Thank you.
Item number three tonight will be a public hearing for an economic development incentive grant. The presenter this evening will be Ms. Candace Louder.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've come before you this evening to request support of a business development grant for codename Project Rail. The company plans to expand manufacturing operations at its New London facility, which will result in $20 million in new taxable investment in equipment. Staff's asking this board to support the expansion with a 75% tax rebate grant for eight years on the new investment only, after which the company will continue to pay taxes on the full assessed value for the new equipment. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have for the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Louder. Any questions from board members? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing open. Declare the public hearing open. Anybody here to speak for or against?
I'm, I'm here to speak for.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Edward Weipe. I've took a little bit of interest in this matter. I don't have any connections to the company or to the folks proposing it. I did exchange some emails with Andy Lucas, trying to understand the proposal. To me, it looks like a win-win for both us and the company. The company gets the, gets the clear message that we treasure their presence in Stanley County, gives them an excuse to stay, gives them an excuse to expand, and meantime, and, and in addition to that, we're, our interests are protected. We're only giving back money after they pay us the tax money, so we really aren't at a risk of losing anything that we, that we already have, or be a loss, or a, basically a rebate on taxes they'll pay as they, as they pay them in. Anyway, it looks like a great plan to me. I'd really encourage you to approve it. Thank you.
Any other to speak for or against the project? Not, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Any other questions, Commissioners? Not, we'll seek a motion.
Chairman.
Mr. Lohan.
Make a motion to approve the property tax incentive grant, 75% for an eight-year term, associated with an investment, a minimum investment.
Motion by Commissioner Lohhan to approve the property tax incentive grant as presented. Is there a second? Second from Commissioner Morgan. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lauter. Oh, I got you again, sorry. Item number four is a building reuse application resolution. Again, Ms. Lauter.
Thank you. In your package, you should have received a copy of a resolution supporting a building reuse application administered by the Rural Economic Division of North Carolina Department of Commerce. This building reuse request is for $500,000 and is scheduled to be reviewed by committee in the coming weeks. There is a 5% county match that's required, which will result in a maximum obligation of $25,000, which will be used for grant administration. The final grant amount from the state will dictate exactly what our 5% local match is. The county will be the grant recipient, therefore a resolution supporting the application to apply for and administer the funds is a requirement of the application. The 5% match will be paid for by EDC department funds that have already been budgeted for this fiscal year. I'll take any questions you may have about the application.
Questions for Ms. Lauter about the application? Or the resolution? If not, we'll seek a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
I move to approve the resolution as presented.
A motion from Commissioner Morgan to adopt the resolution as presented. Is there a second? Second from Commissioner Jordan. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Now, thank you, Ms. Lauter.
Thank you.
Item number five is a rezoning request for property being purchased by Brandon King. Mr. Bob Remsberg is the presenter.
Good evening, Board. Good to see you this evening. With your blessings, I'm going to let Bailey Emrich present this tonight, give her some experience presenting before the board. Because there may be a time when I can't be here and we need to bring her up to speed.
Members of the Board, thank you for having me tonight. I'm going to discuss ZA 19-10. It's a rezoning case. Brandon King requests the rezoning of a 10.8 acre lot at 32091 NC 2427 from RA to general business. The property is currently owned by Bula May Burleson Heirs. Mr. King plans to purchase the property for the purpose of relocating his business, Albemarle Outdoor Equipment. This company is a dealer in lawn maintenance equipment. Mr. King is hopeful to add a tractor dealership into his business in the near future. The property is currently zoned for residential and agricultural purposes. A portion of the property has been cut out for hay in recent years and there's one residential structure on the west side of the property with frontage on NC 2427. Mr. King proposes to keep the residence as a rental property. This would be allowed as a non-conforming use and he plans to construct a commercial building on the east side of the parcel for use of his business. Adjoining parcels are zoned highway business and residential agricultural. One adjoining parcel is owned by Eastside Rentals, which uses the property to repair vehicles for resale. A row of residential structures is along NC 2427. These are zoned highway business, but most are still used for residential purposes. A buffer is required between general business districts and those areas zoned for residential use. And here's an aerial view of the parcel. You can see the home on the lower left side. The business would be on the east side, so the opposite. This is located in a growth area per the 2010 Stanley County Land Use Plan with approximately 15,000 vehicles pass this section of 2427 each day according to 2018. The planning board heard the report from the planning staff and comments from Mr. King at the meeting on November 18th. No one spoke in opposition to this request. Mr. King's plans for a building and the requirement for a vegetative buffer between the project and residential areas met any concerns the board members had. Mr. King indicated that he has been in contact with NC DOT about a driveway entrance and this will be allowed. The planning board unanimously voted to recommend approval based on this being in a growth area and near other zones for commercial use. And this is just another one just showing what it's zoned and the areas around it that are zoned. And this would be going from RA to general business. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Emrich from the board? I have one quick one. You said general business, so that would be different from the current highway business that's surrounding?
That would...
Lightly different?
Yeah, basically, general business is just a little bit more intensive. It allows you to do more than highway business, so if they wanted to continue more business and expand.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from board members? I'll open a public hearing here in just a second and you can speak. Yeah, it is. There's no other questions from board members. I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. If there's anybody here to speak for or against, they may come forward now.
I just couldn't hear. I just want to know what it is. What, I couldn't hear what she said it was.
Oh, okay.
I need to know what kind of business it is. I couldn't understand her. I joined her on the backside.
The gentleman that's requesting the rezoning, and he has signed up to speak, so he might speak in a minute.
That's fine. I'll speak when you get ready.
That's fine, but it was presented to us as the owner, he's relocating his business outdoor, Albemarle Outdoor Equipment.
Is that motorcycles, trucks?
No, I think it's agricultural and landscape type equipment. And Mr. King, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
Said something in the letter about battery storage. I'm not sure what that is.
That's a different item, I think.
Are we on a different deal here? Maybe we're on something different. Says, are we in two different deals here?
Yes.
Is this not on 27? So am I, what am I doing? Am I on the wrong parcel here?
Mr. Remsberg?
It just, you can come lead it. It just says something here about the zoning and it's wanting a decommissioning bond
Okay, that's the other item.
For battery storage.
Right.
Okay.
That, okay, we're on, the item, it has nothing to do with battery storage.
Got you. Are you based in Albemarle now?
Mr. Remsberg is our zoning director.
Okay, okay. Is this business in Albemarle now? Does he want to relocate?
It is.
Okay, so the battery storage is not going to happen?
Well, that's going to be discussed as part of a text amendment in item number six, our next agenda item.
Very good, thank you.
Not for that parcel. Thank you. Mr. King? Mr. Burleson?
Thank you, guys, for taking the time to see us tonight. Basically, we're just looking for a place to relocate that we can expand more. We're located on 52 North now. Our parking is very limited. We are looking to put an agriculture tractor line in. We're looking at AGCO right now with Massey Ferguson. We have not committed either way. Just, we're going to look to construct a metal commercial building there, probably around 12,000 square feet is what we're looking at. And, you know, it just gives us land for future growth. And, you know, we have no problem putting the vegetative along the property lines and we want to make it look professional as possible. You know, that's our goal. We don't want to... We don't want our property to look like it does now, as far as the property beside we're looking at. We're not bringing a car lot or anything like that in.
I appreciate it, Mr. King. Mr. Burleson, you have anything to add?
We're representing Mr. King and the sellers on the property. And I'll just add, you know, the property's certainly in a growth area of Stanley County. It's on a four-lane highway. We've got water and sewer there. You know, Mr. King stated that he's trying to build a nice piece of property and run a business. He certainly deals with national name brands that we all hear and see on a day-to-day basis. So he's going to have a nice facility. It's going to generate probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about $10,000 a year in property taxes, plus the sales tax. You know, he hopes to continue to grow, so it'll be a nice revenue stream for the county. And he's not asking at this time for any tax incentive, so I think it's a win-win for everyone. It's got commercial on two sides of the property. So I would certainly encourage you to vote for this, vote in favor of it. Appreciate you all.
Thank you, Mr. Burleson. Is there anybody else to speak for or against this project? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Schmidt. I live in the property directly east of the land, 32167 North Carolina 2427. I just purchased that property a little over a year ago. I moved here from out of state. And that is my home and I live there. I purchased it with the idea that I lived in a rural residential neighborhood, not that I would be beside a business or a commercial property. I realize my property is also commercial. But I doubt that anyone is going to come in right now and knock down all those four houses right there that are residential right beside this property. I oppose this because I don't want to live beside a business, whether or not there's a buffer. There'll be increased traffic going in. I mean, there's no traffic, of course, right now going in and out of there, but I'm sure they'll have their driveway right there beside my house. With all the land in the back, I don't know what he's going to do back there, if he's going to add on. He said he'd be adding different brands to his business. There's room back there even for another business. I mean, I don't want to live beside multiple businesses. So I oppose it.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Anybody else to speak for or against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Any other discussion from Commissioners or questions?
Chairman, I have a question and may relate to the lady that just spoke. The way I saw the map, those right there on 2427 are already highway business, correct? And I believe you said you had a business?
When I purchased it, I realized that it was zoned residential and commercial. I don't have a business, no. The three houses directly closest to that east of the property are all residential. There is another residence, the very first one by Canton Road. It is a residence and that person also has a home business there. But all the rest of them right there, and also behind me on, I think it's Canton Heights, they're residential. That whole area is just residential.
When you purchased the property, were you aware it was highway business property?
That I was, that my property was that? Yes, I was.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawhan. Are there any other questions? Not, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
I made the motion to approve the rezoning request for Mr. King at 32091 North Carolina 2427 Albemarle. Since it's a growth area, as described in the current Stanley County Land Use Plan, it's location near other commercially zoned properties and this will promote the future, or further economic development in our county.
Commissioner Morgan has made a motion. Does everybody understand the motion? Is there a second? Second from Commissioner Jordan. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Alright, item number six tonight is the presentation of a text amendment. Again, presenter, Mr. Remsberg.
Alright. Good evening again, and thank you for letting Ms. Emrich do that presentation. Pleased that she's doing so well. She's done a lot for us in the planning department, so it's good to have her. Kind of as a request, I kind of trickled down, I think, from the board or some board members from the Commissioners and with a lot of help from Ms. Fur with getting the language adjusted back and forth as we worked on this. The Stanley County Planning Board considered this at their meeting on November 18th and recommends the following language change to Section 618 of the zoning ordinance, which would now require a decommissioning bond and information on batteries as part of the application for major solar electric power generating system, solar farm overlay districts. This requirement will require the establishment of a bond or other instrument that would guarantee funds to be available to remove all equipment if a solar farmer, solar farm owner goes out of business or abandons a project. This is based on language adopted in March of 2018 by the Commonwealth of Virginia, their legislature, which requires decommissioning bond to be adopted in all zoning jurisdictions in the Commonwealth of Virginia. North Carolina Legislature has begun a similar process. I know y'all probably read that earlier on our report or on Dr. Ekman's report to you. The study will take, is predicted to take about two years to complete. So we're kind of anticipating, hopeful, that the language that gets adopted by North Carolina is similar to what was adopted in Virginia. I kind of anticipate that that's what will happen when it's all said and done in a couple of years in North Carolina, hoping that we'll avoid coming back to in about two years or so, or three years going, where the state adopted this language and we got to change it to match theirs. So I'm hoping we're ahead of the curve. The basic idea, of course, is requiring that bond. You can see there were other changes and hopefully you've looked through the various versions that we created on this. Over time, one maybe highlighted the different parts, the ordinance that were changed, because there were just some minor wording changes in parts. And of course, some deals with the onsite battery storage. I know that was a concern of this board. And we've looked and tried to address that, at least to provide that information upfront as the proposals come to us for solar electric power generating systems, solar farms. There were no comments during the planning board meeting on November 18th, no public comments. The planning board discussed the need. We worked on some of the language at that meeting and crafted it a little closer. And then afterwards, they, of course, kind of blessed us to go ahead and work with the county attorney to adjust that language and make it the best we thought we could do, given the information we had. So that's kind of where we're at. So I'll entertain any questions, of course, if you may have.
Any questions?
Mr. Remsberg?
Yes, Mr. Lawhan.
The bond that is to decommission a site, who determines the value and what the bond should be?
Well, and that's obviously a difficult thing to try to sort out. The answer is, the way this is addressing it, is the proposal, the company that's proposing this, the owner of the solar farm, not the property owner, but the owner or developer of that farm, would hire an engineer as part of that process, who's a state-certified engineer, who would have to develop the estimated cost of the decommissioning of that farm. We have, the way it's set up in this proposed language, the planning staff would, in this case, myself, would have the opportunity to review that proposal and approve or reject that person to do that. So we have a little bit of oversight in that, but we aren't paying the bill. So the engineer would establish that as part of that process.
That answers my question, but that seems still a little bit of conflict of interest because if Company A hires me...
Right.
They're paying my bill.
Right.
And they're going to have some influence on things.
I concur.
I mean, is there no way we could require that the company pay the bill, but we be the ones to select the engineering firm?
I, short answer is, I think we probably could do that from a contract. You know, again, it's bound, part of this, and I have to go back and reread that Virginia language, but I think it's, again, kind of a little bit based on the way they had worded it, so that they weren't doing the contracting with the engineer. it, so that they weren't doing the contracting with the, with the engineer. I guess I'll defer maybe to the council here to say whether that's a, you're creating contracts where the solar operator would be paying the, the invoice, basically, but we hired the contractor. I don't know. I would think that's possible, but I don't. It's an extra step.
Mr. Rimsburg?
Yes.
This is something I've been pushing pretty hard on this board. I hope part of that, part of this is, as a, as a result of me...
Sure.
Trying to get this done. I've done a fairly substantial amount of research on it, and unless things have changed, there has never today in the United States been an industrial-sized solar farm decommissioning to this date. Put that in terms everyone will totally understand, we've built tons of them. No one's ever torn one out of the ground.
Right.
The only things I can find in, and I could be wrong, and I'm, I'm open to be corrected, but the only things I've been able to find are decommissioning from high-end residential and smaller, not industrial, but commercial applications.
Right.
And the general consensus amongst those markets seems to be, if it costs, I'll throw a figure out there, $30 million to install a solar farm, then it costs exactly $30 million to remove a solar farm. My rec, my request was to see a 100% bond.
Okay.
If the bond is, if it's going to cost $150 million to put in this farm, we should see a bond for $150 million. What other states have done is cost-adjusted that bond every five years, reevaluating in case technology gets better, or in case cost projections change, to hold that firm accountable, because we're talking about something that's going to affect a farmer's generations of his family, or a land owner for, for two or three generations down the road. So we need a way to be sure these people are protected. I would love to see a 100% bond, myself. That's just, that would be my request.
Mr. Rimsburg?
Yes, Mr. Barbie.
It appears we're putting the fox in charge of the hen house on some of this stuff, but I've got reservations. Who's to say the Commonwealth of Virginia legislature's got the best plan?
[laughing] Right.
You know, I'm not agreeing with that either, so I'd love to see a little more information on it. I've been doing a lot of research, too, and when I found out a solar panel's only 15% efficient, and if it wasn't for all the government subsidies that these companies were getting, it wouldn't be worth putting this system in. So I've, I've got reservations about that, but at least we're doing some work on it. Thank you.
Okay. And I'm, I will say, I'm, I'm flexible on how we get to what the board wants. You know, we, we can, you can send, we can send this back, we can rewrite, but, you know, I, I'm, I'm open to trying to meet what you desire. Let's put it that way. So...
Any other questions for Mr. Rimsburg?
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to make a comment. I agree with Commissioner Jordan. This is something I've wanted for a while, is having a bond on these. And I think county attorney said that we could do what Commissioner Lohon, we can allow or select the, our engineering firm that we want.
If you're going to 100%, you don't really don't need, you don't need that language. You can just make it 100% because it is what it is. I mean, it's 100% cost, doesn't matter who the engineer is at that point, so...
And I, and, and to clarify that, I, I went with 100% because that's the only, that's the only analysis that's been done in existing markets. The residential and commercial markets are the only examples we have, we have to look to. So until such time as something changes, that's the only example we have to pick from. If in three years, the North Carolina legislation decides, hey, here's a blanket fee, or here's an amount per dollar, or amount per square foot that we could change to, I'd be totally for that. But in the meantime, I think we need something that definitely covers the cost, and I can't see where, I honestly just don't think that 100% bond would, would be a problem. I, I think if it costs that much to put it in, it can't cost that much more to get it out. So I think it's a, the smartest step that we could make is a bond equal to construction and development cost. Until such time as something else comes into being, or a metric, it could go by. So I think, from what I'm gathering from the majority of the board, is potentially tabling this motion, or tabling it and sending it back to planning and zoning?
[laughing] That's, that's, that's why, that's what I do.
If that's the consensus of the board, we'll, we'll seek a motion to table item six. I'll make the motion that we table it and send it back for more study. All right, a motion by Commissioner Lohon to table item six and send it back to planning and zoning for more study and more information. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Barbie. Are there any other discussion on that?
I mean, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Morgan? I just got, with 100% bond, I have no idea what that costs. You know, I, I, I want to make sure the bond is there, but I don't want it to hinder future growth as well. If it's so astronomical that we're going to push all these companies away, well, then we're defeating our purpose. So there's got to be a middle ground, so I would like to find, have some, I guess, numbers so we, we can kind of get an idea of what 100% of 30 million, 100% of 100 million would be.
And I would, I would agree with that.
Okay.
I, I know the idea sounds good, but just like Commissioner Morgan said, that's, we need to see what those numbers would be for existing farms to see if we think it's something that would be a reasonable cost burden for these developments.
Right. And, and we can look into that at the, at present, as you know, there's, there's the one project that's been proposed near St. Martin Road that may be before you in as early as January. That's the latest word I've heard from Ecoplexus, the company involved in that project. They're still working on that, and we'll see where that one stands. I do know that there's a second company that has approached us. I do not have the plan. I do not have the parcels. I know it's also near Oakboro, not on the same side of town, but the proposal is for, that I've understood is close to 800 acres. So just put that kind of in your mind that that may be coming, but I don't, excuse me, I don't have that information at this point before you. It's not been to the planning board, hasn't come to me yet. So I'll bring that to you as soon as we have that information. So that's, so, so that is, you know, you don't want to totally discourage this, but, you know, so it's a, it's a matter of trying to figure out what, what's the right balance that works for the, for Stanley County.
All right, we have a motion in a second to table the motion and send it back to the planning department. Is there any other discussion? Yeah, I'm going to take care of that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. We did have an advertised public hearing, and I know there was at least one gentleman here that wanted to speak on that issue. I'm going to allow him to speak in the form of a public hearing, so I'm going to declare the public hearing open and ask if he would like to come forward again.
Yeah, I'm not going to take much of your time. Appreciate you kicking back the solar deal for right now. On the Kubota tractor, I guess that's who it is, all I need to know is y'all voted six to oh. I believe that's what you voted on it, to rezon it. Are there a timeline of appeal on this? If I would want to appeal this, or is it done deal today?
It's, it's official today.
Okay, it's official today. Okay? So you rezoned it?
I don't think he's affiliated with Kubota. That's a different...
Okay, whatever who, I just, he said 52, I just threw that in for whatever reason. Still, he's wanting to go in with retail tractor sales or whatever it is. And then the solar is a second issue.
That is correct.
And y'all kicked that back for more consideration. Am I correct?
Send it back to the planning and zoning board.
Right, exactly. But the vote here today changed the zoning.
For that one parcel.
For that one, for that one, for that one statute.
That's correct.
Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak for or against item number six? All right, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we will move on to item number seven, which is the reaffirmation of our code of ethics as commissioners. Presenter is County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have the information before you. This is the code of ethics that's required per North Carolina General Statute 168-86, and annually you're required to reaffirm this code of ethics. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on the presented code of ethics? If not, what's the pleasure of the board? A motion by Commissioner Barbie to accept the code of ethics as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fur. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. And I think there's going to be a version for us all to sign coming down the line. Item number eight on the consent agenda, is the consent agenda, are there any questions or concerns on the consent agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll seek a motion to approve. Motion to approve by Commissioner Jordan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. That brings us to public comment. Is there anybody that wishes to speak at public comment this evening that's not already signed up? Seeing none, we'll go to Commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Lohon this evening.
No comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohon. Commissioner Jordan?
Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Barbie?
No comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Barbie. Commissioner Fur?
Just kind of got one thing. This is December 12 months. I just want you all to know that this is my first year here. It's been a pleasure to serve with you all, and I wish y'all all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner Fur. Commissioner Morgan?
I just hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving, and like Commissioner Fur, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. I have no comments tonight, so we will seek a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Morgan. Is there a second? Commissioner...
Did I say Jordan? Jordan.
Commissioner Morgan, sorry. Second by Commissioner Jordan. Sorry, got tongue-tied there. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. And we will see you January 6th for our next regular meeting.